Okay. Good evening, I'd like to call the meeting to order, I'll ask for a roll call please.
Ms. Hodges?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Oden, absent. Ms. Rollers Spurgeon?
Here.
Mr. Kleindees?
Here. Mr. Oden is home today with apparently a medical condition, so we wish him speedy recovery, and we'll see him hopefully next week. I'll turn to Madam Clerk for a report on the posting of the agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the agenda you had before you was posted in accordance with the Brown Act procedures for special calls.
Thank you. We'll turn now to public comments, anyone wishing to address the council on any matters within the agency, please come forward at this time. Good evening, John. Better get him a microphone. Just push the button down, John, so the little green light comes on, and we'll give you three minutes, and the timer's behind me.
Okay, I'm gonna do my best here. I just want to-
You named the clerk, sir.
John Brown, Executive Director of the Desert AIDS Project. While Desert AIDS Project's primary concern and interest in developing the Vista Sunrise project is and will always be the services for people living with AIDS and HIV, and we certainly think that we're not going anywhere, the land's not going anywhere, and we would like to, at some point, be able to look at developing a project that is acceptable for the community. My concern is the issue with the county clinic, and there's some little-known facts there that I don't know whether the council is aware of, which is a ticking clock, in that the county, by the time we would've built the facility, at best timeline, there would've been less than a year left on the county's lease. The county actually put out an RFA for the new clinic. We responded and were awarded that clinic. And as a result of that, there's some confusion on the part of the county as to where this stands, and whether or not they need to go back out with another RFA and start all over. They're very concerned, because they're worried that, starting over now, the clock is ticking on that end. So what I would like to recommend is that during this next two weeks, that if staff from the city were able to contact and dialogue with the county to get some really solid information about where things stand with the county health clinic, and what the options are, I think that that would be useful for everyone as we move ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Good advice. Good evening, sir.
Good evening. My name is Wallace Brown, my wife and I are homeowners and full-time residents of Palm Springs for a little over five years. I would ask, since we do not have something definite for the homeless shelter, you would consider the following proposition for the Frye Center. They now have meals three days a week, I'd ask that you would increase that to five days a week. Number two, that you would establish a mailing address, and a mail drop there, so that homeless could receive mail there, this is for job opportunities. Third, I'd ask you to establish a telephone there, so that people who are looking for work could use that as a telephone address. You could block it, so there would be no long-distance calls made on that telephone line. Number four, I'd ask you to install a commercial washer and dryer. People looking for work need clean clothes, and they're more acceptable if they do come with clean clothes. Number five, I'd ask you to install a shower, so that they could take a shower and clean up for work. You can put a monitor on it, so that only so much water is used, you know, per shower. And lastly, if the city is unable to pay for this, or you don't think that you can pay for this, if you will allow us to contact members of the various religious, Jewish, Catholic, and Protestant congregations to collect money to provide for these repairs and equipment, that I think we could be willing to do that. I know my wife and I would be willing to contribute to that on a monthly basis if needed. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Don't worry, I'm not being my Southern Baptist minister self tonight. More my Mother Teresa mode.
Dr. McKinney, I have to give your name to the record, sir. I have to give you your name to the record, please.
Oh, sorry. Wayne McKinney, The Well in the Desert.
Thank you, sir.
Needless to say, we were all very disappointed about having the Sunrise-Vistachino project thrown out. And I wanted to share with you that we have filed a complaint in discrimination in housing against special-needs people with both HUD, who is coming to see you in April anyway, and Fair Housing in Sacramento. And I would tell you that we... This is not the end of the road, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to address the council during public comments? Very good, seeing no one, we'll close public comments, we'll turn to our legislative calendar, only one item on it. First item on the docket is ordinance for second reading and adoption, first introduced on 2/26 of this year. Counsel, what's your pleasure?
I'll move the ordinance for second reading and adoption.
Motion for approval by Ms. Rollers Spurgeon, and second by Ms. Hodges, and I ask again that the title be read and we waive text?
Yes.
Concurrence?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Madam Clerk, if you'll read title, please.
This would be an ordinance of the City of Palm Springs, California, amending the zoning map by approving a change of zone from R2 and O to PD 282 for the property located at the northeast corner of Murray Canyon Drive and Sierra Madre, Zone R2 and O, Section 35.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Ms. Hodges?
Aye.
Mr. Mills?
Aye.
Ms. Rollers Spurgeon?
Aye.
Mr. Mayor?
Aye. It is 401. Seeing no further business on the special meeting, we'll adjourn, and we'll now convene in study session. And first order here is a closed session report by our city attorney, Mr. David Alshire. Mr. Alshire?
Yes, Councilman, in closed session. The items listed on the agenda for the agency, the real property negotiation of Plaza Theater was not discussed, the CBM Properties, Jack Casper was not discussed, the Prairie Schooner, real property negotiations with the Agualeante Band, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Real property negotiations for the city involving Desert Water Agency, property at Vella and Mesquite, we gave a status report, no action was taken. Exposure to litigation, we discussed one case, gave a status report, no action was taken, and the initiation of litigation was not discussed.
And was there not an item added to closed session?
Oh, yes, I'm... Thank you. The real property negotiations involving the Tennis Center with Hagstrom, we gave a status report, no action was taken.
Thank you, Mr. Alshire. I will turn back again to the public for public comments during study session. Anyone wishing to address the council, please come forward at this time. Very good, seeing no one, we'll close public comments. Counsel, questions, comments, or reports? Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills?
Just, I think the points that... The points that Mr. Brown brought up during his public comments, I would hope that we, as a city, could get involved in this arena here with the county, and I don't think it was anybody's intent specifically to exclude that project from our city, just that use at that particular site was what the problem was. And perhaps we could ask staff to maybe work with whoever the powers-to-be, to see if there's some other means of... Or some other site, some other possibility.
Very good. Other counsel questions or reports?
I don't have a problem with that either. I believe that that project was branded wrong, and that we need to try to help them solve the problem. And I don't have a problem with some of the things that this other gentleman said about the Frye Building either.
Very good. Other comments or announcements?
Mr. Mayor, if I could ask for some clarification. The direction that counsel... That staff had was to bring back a resolution of denial from last week's meeting, so if I could get some clarification of what is being asked here this evening, I'm not sure.
I may suggest you may want that, but since it is not an agendized item, we can make comments as far as we've gone this far, but we cannot debate the item, it's not agendized for public debate. So I think the direction you got last week stands, and we can bring it up at that point for further debate additions, amendments. Mr. Alshire?
Well, the comment I heard Counselman Mills comment about, what John Brown said, basically, was he wanted the city to contact the county and kind of find out what was going on with their project, and that's something that could be directed by the city manager to do.
That's fine.
Okay. So then, what I will do is then, I will bring back more information, both on both issues and on what Mr. Brown had mentioned, and then also on the Frye Building, as was requested also. Very good. I will bring that back to the next week, or agendize it as appropriate. Thank you.
Very good. Other comments or announcements? Tomorrow at 5:00 is the grand opening of the Givon Shee, once again, returning to a viable property for hospitality purposes in Palm Springs. On Saturday, the Palm Springs Youth League will open its season, and I believe Mr. Mills is going to throw the first pitch at 8:00. You don't want to miss that, if that's possible. That's... I did that one year, and threw the ball right in the dirt, and blew it right past the catcher, so I'm glad you're doing it this year. And then, the issue of stip funding for transportation has collapsed, as we've reported in prior meetings, there's a meeting scheduled in Riverside on Monday to further define and hopefully debate what opportunities you might have for further advancements on that area. And then additionally, there was, as you all know, we took action to join the Agualeantes in vying for a T3 grant, a federal funding grant, to help hopefully get the funds necessary to build Indian Avenue Interchange. It has been reported to us that there is additional congressional support for that application, and we have been advised that we should, in fact, try to schedule a trip to Washington to begin the lobbying effort. So I have asked Mr. Ready to compile whatever is necessary to bring to the council to make us all aware of what that effort would be, and when that will happen. But there is a possibility. It's a very dark world right now, with a glimmer of hope, though, that there might be some federal funds for interchange development at Indian, which would be extremely beneficial. And then, just for the record, those of you in the audience, the restroom facilities, male and female, in the main hallway have been closed for renovation. We ask you to use the facilities outside in the courtyard, so, just so you know that when you take break during recess. Okay? I don't want you to waste your steps going towards the wrong direction. Well, as many of us have done, I'm sure. We'll turn now to City Manager, Mr. Ready, for his comments. Mr. Ready?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. I would just note a couple adjustments on the schedule for this evening. The Mountain Gate Community Assessment District, we will ask to move that to another agenda this evening. And if we could move the Palm Springs Classic up to their presentation to the first order of business this evening. Then, number two, on the communications master plan, since Mr. Oden is not with us this evening, that was one of his requested items, so if we could postpone that to a subsequent meeting. However, a portion of that, as you see, number A, the budget task force, you had asked the EDC to bring back proposal, they have done so, and Mr. Stiles is here, and so if we could have that portion of the discussion, and those are the changes on the agenda. Thank you, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Ready. We'll go to item G, which is the city council study session topics. Mr. Ready, it indicated, number one, we will be continuing that. The issue is that Mr. Mills and I both have conflicts of interest on that issue, so we'd have to abstain and leave chamber, and without Mr. Oden's presence tonight, we don't have quorum, so the issue cannot be heard, so it's being postponed until we can establish quorum. Item two, the communication master plan has been folded into a future date. Mr. Oden is driving that one, let's see what his intentions are. So far, no one knows what it is. But it has to do with communications, but no one knows what it is. And we're gonna... It's a non-verbal communication. We'll move item three, which is the Palm Springs Classic forward for first introduction. Gentlemen, I believe the floor is yours. Mr. Ready?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of council, this is a housing and golf project, which has come to us, called the Classic, and I would ask Mr. Evans to make the proper introductions. We have maps on the walls, this is a very exciting project, which is long-incoming, and it has great promise. With that, Mr. Evans, if you could take the floor. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. This, I hope the council received this, receives this as a good news update. When the council approved the time extension for the Classic, we committed that we'd bring the most recent time. Let's see, which one was it?
It would be the last time.
We committed that we would give the council a briefing on the project, and what we wanted to do was make progress on the project, so we could give you a very positive briefing on progress being made. The presentation that you're gonna get tonight is a similar presentation to what the Planning Commission received several weeks ago, and I can tell you, the Planning Commission was very enthused by the project and the type of development that will likely come to this particular site. Pat Blue came up to the table with me, and I'm gonna give a quick overview of the project, and then Pat's going to introduce his development team. He's brought his full team. He's brought partners, planners, golf course architect, and some other people in the audience that are here and supportive of the project. So they brought their full team, because I think they're going full steam ahead, and they certainly are, from staff's perspective. The first item that the council's gonna have to grapple with on this project is a legislative item, has to do with amending our general plan. As the council recalls, our general plan today is a combination of industrial and resort with recreation built in, i.e. the old Classic project. And the proposed general plan amendment will be a shift to predominantly residential, golf, and then resort. The resort location has shifted from the middle of the property to the Vista Chino and Genoatri Trail corner, and the type of housing components that we're working on have a wide range of housing opportunities, and I'd like to just go over those quickly, and then they're gonna go over and give you a complete project overview of where they're at. But just to kind of set the context, the residential unit count is up to 450 units for the project, and it would be a range of housing product. The hotel range is somewhere between 400 and 450 units, and it's gonna be the challenge on the site, you know, from the standpoint of hotel financing. Probably won't be phase one, unless something changes, and I think the council is very much aware of the challenges of getting hotels up and running. I'm optimistic that if hoteliers saw the golf course, saw the residential, saw the opportunity, that at that point, we might be able to shift the hotel industry in taking a good look at this, but I think the development team knows that that's probably the hardest part of the project to pull off, and we don't want to raise your expectations that phase one is a golf course and a hotel. The type of hotel that they're contemplating is very easy to generally describe. It's about the same size site, it's about the same number of units, and it's about the same mass and scale as the Wyndham Hotel. You know, it's a five- and six-story product on about the same size site, so while it would be designed differently, you know, it gives you a feel for the type of product that you would see on the corner, so you can visualize it, and obviously, it wouldn't be the exact same site design. The multifamily residential, which is primarily up at the corner of Vista Chino and Genoatri, and does extend around part of the Gulf, that's intended to be a fairly high-density residential. You know, the densities that we normally only have in the Section 14 area, 18 to about 25 and 1/2 units per acre. The general plan designation to get into that range, basically, would say 30 units per acre. So it's one of our higher-density areas, and it's one of the first times we've really broke out of the core of our community and said, "Let's take a look at doing a residential village, and do something that has a range of housing product." Doesn't necessarily mean that all of the high-density would be built, the market conditions are gonna really dictate, and that's why they've given us a range of density from about 18 units to the 25-unit per acre range. When you take a look at that type of product, you're looking at three- and four-story, you're looking at possibility of underground or deck parking, maybe tucked under the building, maybe not fully underground. But to have a quality site design, you're looking at something that's gonna have some real richness to it, and not an inexpensive housing product to try to reach that type of density. They're working on design guidelines for that, and that's one of the issues that we're currently working with them, is to get the property development, or property development and performance standards up, because the entitlement before the council is gonna be a fairly conceptual development plan. In the lower-density residential, you know, ranges of density of 6 to 8.5 units per acre, that's equivalent to our residential garden apartments, the Rose Garden, places like that, not to say that that's the design you would see, but that's roughly the type of density, where you might have some two-story elements, you might have single-story elements worked in, but that's the type of density you can get there. Single-family residential is 3.2 to 4.1 units per acre, that's R1D, four units per acre, a pretty standard residential component. And then, what they really would like is the ability in this approval, and that's why it's very conceptual as far as a land plan, is the ability to take a look at the market, deal with the market conditions, and put housing product onto the market at the right density, at the right design, and not be tied up with a plan that's entitled today that says, "You shall do this, this, and this in each location of the site." The type of development approval is a preliminary plan development district, the master development plan, and they'll go through some more detailed exhibits, as the exhibit on the left, you know, that basically is the level of detail of the primary land use document you would be asked to consider. Basically, shows you the land uses, the locations, and then a notebook that basically has all the property development standards. So that when they go to design a residential or a hotel phase, you then go to the standards and test the project based upon the standards with the flexibility that I indicated. So I've kind of touched on issues, property development standards that we're working on, and we're way down the road on those. Height, moving the height mass of the building up to that corner, you know, it's a little bit closer to existing residential, reviewing the neighborhood up there, there's not a whole lot of view to the east, so we don't think we're gonna lose privacy, but we are taking a look at visual impact. And then, we're obviously in the process of redoing the environmental documents and making sure we test everything there, and that's probably about 90% done right now, so we're at the finishing touches of the environmental documents. A substantial amount of effort has gone into it. I've given you a brief overview, and really, I'd like to introduce Pat Blue and his team, so that you can feel and hear what we've been working with, because we think it's really a good news project.
Thank you, Doug. When we first got involved with this project, we came and introduced ourselves to the mayor and the city manager, and I think the commitment that we made was that we were prepared to come and make the financial commitment to show that the, let's say, the last, whatever it's been, eight years of this project, or 10 years, that we really meant to make this project happen. And in doing that, we tried to put together a quality team that would give you the comfort that you were gonna get a nice project, a well-designed project, and I think, you know, we've hopefully made strides in making up for eight years of lack of credibility to... So that the staff, and by the time it comes before you to a vote, know that we're for real, and that our intention to start construction in the fall, we've taken very seriously. So rather than me talk, I think the purpose tonight was to give you an overview of the project, so let me introduce you to our team, and they can come up and tell you about the golf course and the land plan. First person that's here is Van Stevens from Forma. Forma is an international land planning firm that has done a number of projects here in the Coachella Valley. We found them to be wonderful to work with, and have seen a lot of the product that they've done, and are very happy with what they've done with this project. The golf course designer is Todd Eckenrode of Origins Golf Design, wonderful golf designer, done some wonderful projects, and he can... He and Van can tell you a little bit about some of the projects that he's done. Our engineering firm is a local firm, Monero Smith, who I'm sure you all know. And Mike Peroni is also here, who's working on the environmental. With that, let me introduce you to Van, and he can tell you a little bit about our project.
Thanks, Pat. Try the button on... Make sure it's all the way on, there's a standby mode.
Thank you, Pat. Now that working? Okay, good. Appreciate being here. I wanted to emphasize to you that the principals in this project, the developers and the builders that are working on it very hard this last year, have, I think, assembled a really great team, a strong team. Most of these projects, as you know, are very complicated, especially one this large. We have multiple engineers and multiple planners and multiple architects working on it, it's a bigger team than even Pat suggested, and I think we have the best of the best. We have marketing, traffic, we have community analysis groups, focus groups. There's a tremendous amount of energy going on, because our direction as a team from the principals was, they wanted a project that was very well-designed, extremely secure in its future, and very relevant to what is going on on this site. So the team is strong for that reason, and we have put a lot of work into it. I'll briefly give you a quick orientation, then I'm gonna turn it over to Todd, because he's got the most interesting part of the project, which is the golf. The site, as you know, is on Vista Chino and Genoatri Trail. As you analyze the site, particularly from the interior of the site, it's a fabulous place, it's got tremendous views, spectacular views. It's very easy to get to, it's a gateway, we think, for the city of Palm Springs, and so it has a lot of responsibility and a lot of opportunities. In balance with that, though, there are a lot of conditions that we have to deal with, because our neighbors are so diverse, from the airport and its related uses, the neighborhoods, the access, the vacant land, the whitewater wash, all those things are complicated and have multiple agencies that we're dealing with. So we've been hard-working and identifying all those, and making a project come together that fits all the criteria that the clients have asked us to do. I have to say, the staff, we've spent a lot of time with them, we've asked for their time, and they've nicely replied, we've engaged them in numerous meetings, and they've actually affected the design in a number of places, and we like it that way. We want to be... Make sure this thing is fitting in for you, as you have to make your decisions on it. The main formula for the project is one that it's a balanced community, that it relates to all price ranges, that it contributes to the recreation of the valley, and that it is a unique project. We do have competition in this valley, and this project needs to stand on its own and be very proud, and as you'll see when we go through the plan, I think we've done that. So with that orientation, I do want to turn it over to Todd, he'll focus on the golf, and I'll step back up and give you some more detail. and I'll step back up and give you some more details on the actual land plan itself.
Thank you, Van.
Does that sound okay? The first thing we looked at when we came to the site was the great feeling of expansiveness you get on the site. You've got the airport to the west and the wash to the east, so from a golf course perspective, we're looking at distant views predominantly. And the fact that there are no major structures, aside from a few isolated ones, predominantly no major structures to either side, really opened up the feeling of the site, felt very wide. We noticed that the views to the north, to the south, and to the west were all very strong, with really the highlights to the west, of course, the nearby range in the south was also quite good. So as you can tell by the orientation of the golf layout, it's reflective of that, lining ourselves up with distant views. The other major factor in the design was both, was the golf course handling both onsite and offsite storm flows, which is really an engineering issue, but we turned it into a complete positive by establishing a desert, if you will, riparian corridor that travels from the top of the site. Majority drainage travels north to south on the site, from the top of the site up by the eighth and ninth hole, down through the major corridors, all the way to the bottom of the site, with tributaries, if you will, on the east-west corridors. The other issue that was something we took of obvious note and determined a lot of our design was the fact that it is a site that could be windy at times, as you know. If you look at the best golf courses in the world on windy sites, the main characteristic is that they change orientation quite a bit. You don't get a predominance of field, whether it's downwind, upwind, or left, right, or right to left. So that's another one of the factors we took into high consideration when designing the layout, and if you'll notice in the layout, we do really go in all four directions, and then some multiple times. You don't get a basic loop of golf holes, if you will, it's constantly changing direction, which lends itself to one of the things we consider most important, which is variety. So you're going to get a variety of fields from the wind, if you will, and variety translates all the way down to how we utilize the riparian corridor and everything. Aside from that, as you notice, it's predominantly a double fairway type of a golf course layout. There is a bulk of three holes at the bottom, one single fairway hole on number 12, or I'm sorry, on 16 as well. Obviously, what this does for us is it creates a width, which is so important to a designer. Single fairway layouts can be very restrictive in width, obviously. We're creating corridors, not only through double fairways, but because of generous safety setbacks and such that are in excess of 600 feet in most of these areas, which is a very generous corridor, if you will. It's reflective of what we want to accomplish on the site, and it's reflective of the fact that it could be a windy site at times. So aside from that, other characteristics of the course you'll see is, we are trying to appeal to a very wide variety of players, so it will be highly playable. The width, of course, adds to that. Entrances to greens will not be, you know, predominantly high in forced carries and such. There will always be ways to run the ball in, another important factor in windy sites. Yet it will be, of course, a true challenge. It is, you know, somewhere in the ballpark of 7,000 yards plus, and obviously bunkering in greens and their relation to the riparian corridors and such will add what we term strategic challenge, if you will. So that's a brief synopsis. Anything else? Would you like to go back, or should I open it to questions and answers?
Could I make a suggestion?
Sure.
When Van gets back up, since you're awfully modest, could you get Van to tell you, tell us a little bit about you?
Sure, I'll do it. I've worked on projects throughout the state predominantly, in southeast and internationally a bit as well. I've done projects in Southern California, Northern California, and Central Valley that have all been very well-received. Our last project we opened was the Brony Indian Reservation down at San Diego. It's done very well, a very successful resort. They've done wonderfully. Operationally, it's also done great in a variety of awards. It was the first Audubon Certified Golf Course in Southern California. It was, it's been recently named in Golf Week Magazine, in their Top 100 Modern Courses, number four public course in the state behind Pebble and Spiglass and Postiempo, and, you know, the top 10 new courses last year in Golf Magazine, and that sort of stuff. So we've done exciting work and work that's been highly acclaimed in those venues, and that's about it.
That's better.
Okay. Very good.
While they're changing microphones, let me make one other comment that I left out. Another group that's here in the audience is a major builder that we have been working with to come into the project with us and help us make this project happen, and that's a group from Centex Homes, and we're very happy that they could come tonight in support of what we're doing, and just wanted you to know that they were here.
Okay, appreciate that. One more thing I want to say about Todd, because he is a modest man, is that his courses are very much in the line of being classics. The name of his firm is Origins. He's a very hands-on craftsman. He is the type of golf course architect that many famous architects have been, where he's going to be out there building this course personally, and will make sure every detail is hit. He's a pleasure to work with. We work with a lot of golf course architects, and there's very few of them that put the attention and time that he puts into it, and I think his position in the industry is growing very quickly because of that hard work and focus. I'll quickly summarize the nature of the rest of the design of the project. The golf really drives this project. The business plan is oriented that way. I think the project is going to be quite recognized because of the golf, and then how do we make the rest of it work? Because the golf in itself will not perform as a business. So what we're suggesting is a project that has a lot of design details associated with it. That, we believe, in the industry is what makes projects popular and very valuable in the marketplace. So we have established design principles, which are all suggested in the PDD, and those deal with the fact that we have to make every part of the project very, very attractive. We are suggesting things like pedestrian-friendly environments, very strong landscape features in the project beyond the golf course. We're going to have traffic calming devices in our private street areas. We're going to have eclectic use of colors in architecture. We think in the Palm Springs area, that's a very positive thing. It's proven in land development that mixing of styles and flavors are a good thing, it makes the community balanced. We're going to have all sorts of varieties of price ranges and mixing of architectural styles. We're going to have compact architecture, meaning that we want the outdoor lifestyle, the features of the golf course, the recreation elements that we're going to have to be the strong elements in this community. So the architecture is focused on that. We also want to be responsive to the marketplace. We're not going to be building million-dollar homes in this condition. We're going to be building homes that relate to people who want to live in Palm Springs, be near a golf course, and enjoy the lifestyle that's involved. So those principles, again, there's a lot of detail on those, and we'll be sharing those. The architecture itself, again, we want to have an eclectic mixing. We do not propose one style. We suggest that there should be all sorts of styles, from Spanish to Monterey, to modern Palm Springs style, to Mediterranean and American classic. We think that we can pull all these together and work very well, and relate to the price ranges that we're suggesting. We do have both single-family detached and attached products proposed in the plan, and we intend to use all these flavors, so that we have a timeless project, one that does not become dated, or one that is identified any one form or era. This is basically what we call an illustrative site plan. It's the same thing as the master development plan that you have before you, but it shows you a little bit more in character how it lays out. The golf, as Todd explained, is very exciting. Every hole is different, every hole has a different view. If he had more time, he could go into every one of those, and I'm sure you'll appreciate it if you identify at all with golf. It became clear to us that the site really presents to us two opportunities. One is a resort village in the northern end here, where we have great access, where we have a chance to put in recreation facilities, where we have a chance to, you know, deliver types of housing, attached and detached, higher densities, and really, the bottom line in that whole area is creating a critical mass residential neighborhood, we call a resort village, so that we can really concentrate a lot of recreation up in that area. Obviously, it would be complimentary to have the hotel, and we have our candidate hotel site in that location for that reason, so that we have a mixed-use resort village that is sharing the recreation with all the uses I just mentioned, and we think that we need that certain critical mass to deliver all that recreation, because it has to be paid for and maintained. So the resort village is looked at as slightly more urban than the southern part, which is largely single-family neighborhoods of various types, intimate neighborhoods that have landscape features, that have obviously orientation to golf, all of it very pedestrian-friendly. The street system specifically is designed in a figure-eight form, so that there's tremendous walking paths and corridors for people to enjoy that pedestrian environment. So we specifically thought about that in the whole design. Each of the neighborhoods are very intimate and very tight, and the people will feel very well with that and identify with it, and allow us to bring in that eclectic architecture. Every neighborhood will probably have flavors mixed together, even in the same street scene. To give you a feeling, I think, because staff has talked about it, this is a photo simulation. It was actually done, I believe, for the environmental documentation. This is actually the Wyndham Hotel architecture itself, a photo of it, put on our site in scale. So this location here is looking at the site from across Ginatri Trail, and the bottom view is looking across Vista Chino in this location. So you can see about how the site would relate, and about the type of landscaping and features that we would be suggesting for the resort village. And then further to show you our intent, we prepared an illustrative plan, I hope you can see that, but here you'd be standing, looking across, again, Vista Chino, Ginatri Trail here. We would have the recreation facilities, the candidate hotel, the attached housing, all of this in a very village-y type form, very pedestrian-oriented. Cars are really not a part of the scene, and it gives you an orientation and about how that density that we're proposing would work in that area. We're staying within the bounds, I think, of the city's height limits and the fire department's wishes relative to some of that density, but I think it'll be required that we have very good and high design to make all this work, and that is our intent. The cross-section down here below shows you the maximum height that we might ever build with our entitlement, and then landscaping, Ginatri Trail, there's a vacant parcel, and then the nearest residential. So we're quite far from any nearest neighborhood residential area, and I think the environmental documentation prepared by the city will further analyze that. So that generally gives you an overview of our project. We think it works real well. It's got a lot of flexibility, a lot of opportunity. The principals in this project want it to be unique, and I think it'll be something that Palm Springs will be very proud of. So with that, I'll answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Van. Pat, anything else?
That's all. Happy to answer any questions.
Let's go to Doug, then.
Just real quickly, as you start looking at a project like this and changing the general plan and how that might affect the neighborhood, if you take a look at the location, you know, Vista Chino and Ginatri, got great transportation, quick access to Interstate 10, east-west access, real good transportation-oriented development, and the density starts to work well with being able to link into transportation. If you look at the northwest corner, there's a 20-acre piece of Indian land that's Zone C1. The likelihood that we need 20 acres of commercial at the C1 level, a cattaccorner to this, is doubtful. But one of the things we'll look at in our general plan, not for this project, but the general plan update, is maybe taking a look at a different type of designation for that property. We currently have changed the community shopping center designation, where you can have a mix of commercial and residential, and I think you have an opportunity over there to maybe have a mixed-use development, that after this project is well underway, another opportunity to take a look at this intersection, and instead of having a high-density residential project in some people's minds fairly far away from town, you basically start creating a real core, and as you start dealing with transit-oriented development concepts, the more density you have at high-density and high-intensity intersections, the easier it becomes to look at transportation systems as we go down the road. But, you know, opportunities really changes the dynamics, to take this from an industrial-type project to a residential for a number of different properties, also in the other direction to the south. But, Mr. Mayor, that completes our presentation tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Evans. Counsel, comments, questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Just first, impressive project, but I do have some questions. Doug, first, general plan, what are we being asked to change, general plan versus what the current general plan is, in particularly from a density standpoint?
Well, a density standpoint today, it's an intensity issue of primarily industrial, you know, so you have an industrial-type density, and then we had a resort component that had roughly 500 hotel rooms and some timeshare built into it. So we're shifting, you know, from an intensity of land use that would be primarily industrial to the residential side. So the, you know, the ranges of general plan designations would be the high-density residential 30, M15, and probably low 6, maybe some low 4 in a couple of areas. Those are the ranges that we're looking at. Taking a look at the intensity of development, just, you know, comparing traffic and in other environmental impacts, it's going to be pretty close to a trade-off. You know, what you'll get is different times that the traffic occurs, but pretty similar overall volumes.
What about impact on city services?
Impact on service? We're going through that at this point. We haven't completed the full review. We're, you know, Mike Peroni's the environmental consultant working for the city, and he's going through each department and taking a look at services. Any particular specifics?
No. The, are we looking at general plan amendments on the specific site area? Are we looking at for adjacent properties as well?
At this point, we're only looking at this particular property. We're looking at the 450-plus or minus acres. We're focused in on this. It's a development application as well as a general plan amendment. We would pick up the other types of things, you know, later on as part of the overall general plan process. We're at the stage where we could make some adjustments if the council has any particular direction.
Specifically, Doug, the two void areas along Ginatri where Desert Sun is, that's going to be surrounded by residential now. Okay. Of course, that product is their first, the, not industrial, but the manufacturer use is there now. How much of that property that we're looking at as void now is not developed?
We have two parcels of land that are not part of the Bird Corporation area, you know, directly tied to that next to FedEx. We've got the piece just south of Techeva. You can see that, I don't, Van, maybe you could point it out. That piece is one ownership, and then the piece just north of the Desert Sun, that's another single-ownership parcel. And what we're doing, since we're pulling residential up and around it, we debated about, you know, should we push and stretch the golf course out to create the buffer, you know, a lot of different site-planning options, and the way the staff and the development team is looking at this now is to create a buffer designation between those two properties. There would be two general types of buffers. One would be a landscape buffer, and the other one would be a roadway buffer. Obviously, dense landscaping to try to screen, we've got buildings in the 50-foot range on the existing Bird facility in Desert Sun. So we're basically looking at, you know, trying to do some transitional development. In addition, by designating an open space or a transitional area between the properties, what we're trying to do is not trigger any of the restrictive setbacks in the M1 zone for those industrial parcels, because the residential comes in next door. We've got a criteria that basically says, if you have M1P adjacent to residential, there's a 100-foot setback, and by putting And by putting a buffer strip in, we're going to negate that so we don't impact those industrial parcels. So we're trying to look at the, the sensitivity, and I, I think the good news is people that move into the homes will see the largest buildings there when they choose to buy the house. It's not going to be as if the building comes up after they've moved in. And that, that, that would be a real challenge for buildings like the Desert Sun and Bird.
You kind of hit on something that I, that I was looking at as well in that exact same area between those two vacant parcels, and that is...
We need shorter answers.
Go ahead. What the, what the, in that, you know, I was curious as to why the golf course did not come up in, in between those areas, not only for the buffer standpoint, but from the opportunity to get vistas into this project versus, versus just looking at back of single-family or multiple-family, whatever it is. And, and the other projects that we, that we've looked at in the past, I know that has been a concern, and from my standpoint, it's still a concern. I would like to see vistas into the project from Gene Autry, and we really don't get them except down there towards the south end. So that's a concern. The, I'm, I'm curious about the location of the hotel in relationship to the clubhouse and the starting point of the golf. I'm sure I took one of the mayor's questions. And, and I'm, I'm assuming if you've got a hotel that's 400 to 450 rooms, you know, you're looking at golf being a pretty important element of, of that. Yet it's, from what we're seeing, I don't see that as being a real strong link, unless there's something happening in that passage from the hotel to the clubhouse that, that I don't really see. And maybe you haven't gotten to that, that detail yet. But I, you know, if you could give an explanation of what your thinking is there, that would be helpful, helpful for me.
I'll be very short. We discussed those issues with the design team and Van and maybe the golf course architect. Todd would like to address those issues because they were, they were debated very early and, and one of the key issues that we talked about first series of meetings.
Todd, you can come up to the seat here. We'll move the mic over for you. You can just sit here if you want, unless you want to work off the exhibits, of course. Yeah, whatever's good for you.
Yeah, I would like to. Let me try and summarize the answer to that because it is a multifaceted issue. The nature of the site is very linear, and as we said, this is, this whole project's driven by golf, and this, the golf needs to be very high-quality golf. We definitely want returning nines for that clubhouse. I think that's an important element in a golf course. And even further, there's subtleties to the golf design which we can, if you want to spend more time on, we get Todd back up here to deal with it. But the central location of that clubhouse is very important. It's very common to have clubhouses remote from hotels because the hotel guests, we believe, yes, they want to see the golf and they want to get to it, but it's a short, short shuttle trip there from the hotel to the clubhouse. And again, it probably would be a shuttle-type of thing rather than automobile-type access. And even a walk is very easy in this site. It's not that far. The hotel guests want the recreation, they want the services, they want the things that we're talking about putting in our, in our resort village, high, high recreation services. They can easily get to the golf. It was more important to us really to get that golf, to have the returning nines, and this site dictates that, that requirement. We think the hotel is best located in that location because the services up there, it is in fact the land use that can tolerate, frankly, the impacts of those highly, heavily-traveled roads and so forth. And we think that architecture can turn its back on those roads and, and relate to the views and so forth that we've shown you in the drawing. So it was a complex decision-making process, and it was all driven about making this the best golf course that's going to be available in this part of the valley, and that's, that's the charge that Todd's had. And so he has dictated this routing and the, and the location of the clubhouse, and we think everything else works pretty well. So the clubhouse remote to the hotel should not be a major problem for visitors. It's not that far away. I, I hope that answers...
I mean, that, that, that answers the, from the, you know, that, that standpoint of it. But the, but the, but the other standpoint to me is the, the amenity of being next to a golf course for a hotel. In other words, the, the vast open space, opening, opening onto a big greenbelt. And, you know, I know we don't see exactly the plan, but you've got a road that cuts the, the, the part of the hotel, or cuts the hotel away from the golf course. And it just, I don't know, I mean, unless your concept is different than, than the way I would think it may be, it would seem to me that you would want to, to get it, you know, somewhere. So where, so where you can take advantage of that golf course, amenity from a view corridor standpoint.
As, as we see this project develop, we really believe that as, as resort development, resort village comes together, that there will not be a fine line necessarily between where the hotel is and where the residential is, that they'll, they'll very much merge together in a mixed use. There'll be a lot of overlap between the two as far as recreation and operations and everything. So exactly where the hotel stops and ends, I think, is an architectural solution down the line when we find, you know, the right operator and so forth. So the relationship to the golf, I think, is intimate and is meant to be that way. We know that the hotel guests are going to want good access, and we will design it that way so that, that can happen. So as you look at it, don't see that this cartoon suggests that they'll be cut off. I think this is a better feeling for how it will be integrated. Obviously, the, the golf course financing and development's a very difficult thing to do, and we believe that the premiums associated with the residential are a very important thing to protect in this design. And we suggest that people using recreation facilities like that might be there, would be a better, better use, more people in the project available to the view of the golf course overall. One, one more thing I wanted to throw out because you brought it up, and it is something that we heard about very early, that we know that Palm Springs residents and, and people want to feel this community, and they want to feel the golf course. This is quite a long distance here, and we specifically designed that so that the golf is touching Gene Autry Trail. And we specifically suggest that our landscape design and palette in that area, we will sense that golf course very clearly for that distance. And even along here, here and other places, we're going to have significant landscape, and we think we can make it very clear to people passing by that this is a special project, and they will sense that and feel it with our landscape program. So it is noted very early that we had that responsibility, and this design was specifically for that. The golf is located in its best place because of drainage and views and operations. And then from there, we fit, fit it in. This was driven specifically for that aspect of trying to expose the golf to, to the world. And in these areas here, we're very much constrained from doing that because getting golf in and out of there is a very difficult thing to do, and that, that's why it lays out as it does. We could do single fairway design, but again, that's not the preferred premium golf experience. I hope that answered some of that question.
Well, it's a rationalization that's acceptable. My, 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 my whole reason in saying this is, it's been explained to us that don't expect the, the hotel phase in Phase 1, maybe not even Phase 2. I don't want to be sitting here approving a project with a hotel that you're going to come back in five years and say, "Well, you know, it didn't work out, it, you know, the, the hotel doesn't have this and it doesn't have that." And so we want to put in a, a commercial development, or we want to change it to housing. And, and what I'm saying is, I mean, if, if you want to do that, that's fine. I prefer that you do that now. But I think you're treating the, the hotel site as a, as a, as the ugly sister here to, to where I think you're going to make it difficult to market it, unless there's something going on, I don't see. And so that's a hesitation, again, I have, and I'm, you know, I'm, and I'm, and please don't get me wrong, that this, I mean, I like, I like what, what's, what's happening here, and maybe I just need to, to understand it more. Thank you very much.
Could I maybe speak to that for just a moment? The hotel component of this project is probably, is probably the most difficult. I would, I would guess that there hasn't been a major hotel built in the, in the Coachella Valley in 15 to 20 years. And to, if a hotel comes along, they literally are going to dictate what they want to see. And they're going to come to the city and they're going to ask you for whatever they're going to ask for, and they're going to demand from us whatever they ask for. And it's, and it's very difficult at this point. You know, we've, we've been working with a couple of hotels that have had some interest. It's, it's very difficult at this point to get exactly what it is that, that they want. And we're prepared to do what we've got to do to try and get that hotel. But it's a, you know, will we have one in the next 10 years? Your guess is as good as mine. I mean, if I, if I took hotel site, I wish it was right next to downtown, but that's not where this property is. And, I mean, it, from our viewpoint, it is what it is, and, and we've made a commitment to go after a hotel, and we're going to do that. But I, I think they're going to tell us what they want, and we're comfortable in giving them what they want. So that's kind of the way we've approached it, is, is we've tried to make this plan flexible enough that we can put the hotel where the hotel needs to be.
Other counsel questions or comments? Let me open my comments by stating the following. We have been so used to seeing something different that we're not used to seeing what you showed tonight. So we have a couple of observations and questions. We're, we're glad to see anybody drawing drawings on this property, mind you. Of course, we want to get past the drawing stage. We've got drawers filled with drawings, and we want to get something in the ground. But as Chris said, he's, you know, it's just, it's a different way of looking at it, and you've rationalized it differently than he's rationalizing it, and so on and so forth. But, but I want to give my, my list of observations and comments. The biggest one you have to understand is the following. In, in the great city of Palm Springs, this is probably the single last piece of property of this size on the flat. This is it. I mean, whatever this gets built as, it is done. There is no other property in Palm Springs that we have or can assemble for a future developer that gives you this scale, this size, and this kind of view opportunity, and whatever other amenities you can associate with it. So what I've always been looking for through all the list of developers that have been dabbling in this, stirring this stew, as they say in the business, is something that is relatively signature to the property, not just, "Well, I saw this somewhere else, I'm going to put it here." You know, "It's a thing they did in Baltimore, so I'm going to copy it and put it here." Because this is it. Whenever you're done with this, we can't say, "Well, you should have done something differently." So what I'm, I've always been looking for is a, is a signature design, a development. I would suggest to you from my standpoint, what I've always had in my eyes, in my, my preconceived view of this property, I have always seen this thing primarily as a hospitality property. And I know what you're saying about hospitality and the, the building of hotels, not just here in the Coachella Valley, but anywhere. We all know, I mean, it was in the paper today, American AMR is in trouble, all the major airlines are in trouble, everything in the industry's flat, going down, brink of war, it's all going in the wrong trend. So it's not realistic to believe that tomorrow, some hotel guy is going to say, "I saw the meeting last night in Palm Springs, how do I get on board?" Because they're not waiting to build hotels, they're trying to figure out how can they hold on to their current inventory of properties. But I've always seen this driven by a hospitality component as the primary, and that the housing was a secondary, if not tertiary function behind this. What you've done is flipped that, and that seems at least obvious to me, that your primary focus is the residential, and that the hospitality component, that which we've always called one of the jewels, if you will, of the crown, considering all the possible developments we've looked at, this was one of them we, we've always hoped would be one of those hospitality pieces. It has been moved from the central sort of main stage to sort of the, the outline area. And my first blush, when I stopped by this afternoon, and the staff was putting up these early drawings, I stopped by between meetings and, and just kind of took a quick glance at this sort of conceptual diagram. And I was a little bit surprised by the orange dot at the corner, that I would never have imagined that there would be a desire to put the hotel of all the places to locate in this multiple-hundred-acre parcel, that would be the primary location you'd want it. I was, I was just surprised by it, that your interface to context by surrounding is an existing housing tract, which is probably your most difficult neighbor by context to respond to, especially when you're dealing with six-story heights, and some commercial, which was, for all practical purposes, built when it was in the county, wasn't even built when it was by city standards. So I would lend to you that it's probably not the most desirable visually to place a hotel. So furthermore, when I see this, I, I join Mr. Mill and his, Mr. Mills and his concern regarding the separation, the bifurcation of the clubhouse here and the hotel there. And although we're only a fairway away, although number nine looks like a monster par five, by the way, is that about right? I, I can't tell from here, but it looks like a monster coming home. That's got to be close to 500 yards, if not more, huh? How big is that dog?
It's about 570, but it's downhill.
Oh, oh, and the wind's in your favor. Okay, so 570. So just to, just to kind of add credence to my thinking, so now it's, you know, it's 600 yards, at least in fairway, to get from the beginning to the end. So if you were to the far corner of the hotel and you wanted to do the pedestrian sort of experience, you're going to walk, you know, a pretty beefy par five plus a short par three, you know, you're going to walk a pretty good distance. Because the relationship, as, as Chris said, the hotel was not the primary, let's get that around the views, let's get that around the amenity, let's get that around the golf course, which is at least traditional when hospitality is the primary. That was not the focus in this design. It was a secondary. I'm a little concerned about the fact that it's not primary. I'm a little concerned that we don't reserve the future right for you, the developer, and the hotelier, future property and, and operator, to have the opportunity to be a part of this, this, this last jewel in Palm Springs. I am concerned about six-story development of all corners to place six stories in next to the residential community. And you can look at the cross-section you've done across the street and otherwise, and you reference the vacant property across the street, but the vacant property currently to the west is just that, vacant. It's not declared open space, it's not maintained as landscape, unless you're planning to purchase it and buffer, it's, it is currently open, but I don't know what you could put in that little tight strip because it's very difficult. But the reliance upon that as a buffer without ownership, I think misses at least some of the pieces in the assembly to, to secure my confidence there. Is there any discussion even in the future, because there was in the past years, of a 27th hole component, another nine holes in the wash?
Yeah, one, one of our concerns was that if, if you put the number of houses that are here and then you put a hotel...
And you put a hotel in.
That 18 holes wasn't enough.
Ain't going to work, that's why I ask, yeah.
So, so what we've done is, if you'll notice on the big drawing, there's a driving range. That driving range is actually across the levee in the wash.
Yes.
We have a, we, towards the end of this month, are going to the, the board of the CVWD to get approval to lease that parcel, which is about 70 acres, and then an additional that parcel that's, I think, I can't remember what it is, 80 acres or something, that's actually in Cathedral City. So we can put both those together and build another nine holes should the, should we get the hotel. So we're, we're, we've made a long-term commitment, I think that lease is 99 years, to obtain the ground so that if we do get a hotel, that we've got the capacity and the golf course to, to handle that.
Well, I appreciate your concurrence to my suggestion before I made it, because the reality is you build all those houses and you build that 400-unit hotel, you have, you've gone beyond peak ability, and you're going to have frustrated homeowners or guests because it ain't going to work. And if you go nine holes, and pretty much the line you've got on that large drawing is the city's jurisdictional line, so anything to the other side of that borderline goes into Cathedral City, and we can make calls to facilitate, but we cannot negotiate, if you will, on your behalf nor make determination. So you either have to go that way or cross over Vista Chino, or eventually if the bridge ever get built, which is a pretty low priority based on some of the problems they have with state and federal funding for transportation, you might be able to go under a bridge and go northbound. But it's a whole different set of property parameters and ownership, as you're probably more than aware than I am at this point.
We, we, we at this point have, and there was a long time ago, actually, some, some agreements on some of this that we've put back together. And we've received, gotten a good re, reception from Coachella Valley Water District. As I said, they're, they're taking it to their board towards the end of this month that would give us adequate land to build the golf course. We couldn't do another 18. Actually, there's, there's another parcel in there that's, that's not owned by Coachella Valley Water District, it's actually Indian-owned, that, that if we, if we needed to, we could probably get our hands on.
Could negotiate, yeah.
But it's, it's fully our intent that we have the property available to build that extra, and we recognize that part of it's in Cathedral City, and that brings up a, another issue. But we have no, really have no choice but to go forward and deal with it, and, and when the time comes, hopefully that's a, having that hotel there is enough incentive for everybody to help us make it happen.
Okay. On the issue of... Um, on the issue of, um, of, um, the intersection, Gene Autry is scheduled for enhancements in a, in a, in a hopeful world. Um, we're hopefully even going to make transportation modifications from that intersection to the interchange itself. So we hopefully want to widen and broaden the capacity of that road, and we're hopefully trying to line up some federal funds, but again, as I said earlier, it's all collapsed, so that's part of our plan to bring that in as a gateway. In fact, the interchange and the bridge design has been coordinated through our Arts Commission to give it a gateway entry visually that will tie in with some of the landscape work that's being done on the median strip that lines all of Gene Autry. And that's also a, a grant piece that we got, and I think that's coming close out of Caltrans, that should be going forward, uh, soon, if not shortly. So that'll work well. Um, I give concurrence to, to Chris's comments about the golf course along Gene Autry. I think in some of the iterations, I won't remember which one it was, there were, there was more of a golf course response to the Gene Autry, which added a little bit more of a buffer, um, from the state highway, from the airport, and from the residential units. I am concerned, I'm just telling you stuff off the bat, this is our first blush, and I want to make sure it's on the record, at least you're aware of initially some of the concerns, you can obviously still go move forward, but just to be aware of the concerns. Um, the residential relationship to industrial concerns me. Uh, regardless of whether it's there or not there, back of house at Desert Sun is just that, it's a back of house of a pretty big box. And when you start dealing with one or even two-story, uh, residential components, and the Desert Sun's nightly, early morning operation, there's a noise response that exists today that will not be very compatible, no matter what housing unit you put in there. God forbid you put a hotel unit in there, let alone a residence with a small child trying to get some sleep, there is noise that generates today out the back of Desert Sun. And it is, it is, as currently noted, manufacturing industrial, so it has that sort of behavior behind it already. Probably not so bad up by the Bird Corporation, but I would suggest to you that the Desert Sun is a known early morning riser.
We, we, we are aware of that.
My paper's at my curb at six, so somebody got up earlier than six to get it there. And they're running the presses all night long and the doors are open, it's, it's thunderous at times, so just be cognizant of that so that your designs accordingly. What else have I got here? Um, I, I guess the concern I might have is that, um, because the hospitality is not taking any premier position, location, and sighting, um, that because it's moved out, as Chris says, possible scenarios, iteration is that in future dates it doesn't work out, let's come back and change use, which basically then evaporates any possibility of hospitality. And I'm a little concerned about that, because again, this was one that we've talked about. This does have a, a, a gaming overlay on it, Doug, is that correct? Is this, no, this one does not have it. The prior owners wanted to have it, that's what it was, okay.
We'll take it.
Well, you know, you can bring it before the voters, I mean, that's what they got on the last three. The last three locations were placed on there by a measure that went before the voters, and the voters said yes, so none of the three have ever been activated. So whether you ask for a fourth one or the removal of one to, that's, the voters made the decision last time, and they're the only ones that can make it in the future, I believe. So, uh, those are my comments off the bat. From my standpoint, I, I've been trying to figure out the golf hole there, I, I probably lost nine balls and I'm not off the first nine yet, so it's a pretty good course, you know, I mean, it's pretty challenging. Back-to-back threes, I thought was kind of curious, two and three?
Yeah, those aren't two and three.
Yeah. That's pretty unusual, but it's kind of, I'm, I'm okay with it.
It's, uh, it's not two and three, actually, you play one, two, uh, three and-
Oh, there you go, okay.
Five and six. And that actually touches on another reason why we cited the clubhouse where it was, is there's a lot of talk in our-
I might want to get the mic, I think, my TV crew's going to start screaming any second now. They get a little sensitive and the council doesn't tell people to talk into the mic.
There's a lot of talk in the industry of, um, creating alternative golf facilities to, to appeal to a bigger market, if you will, um, people who don't have, you know, four hours to go play golf and want to look for exercise in a shorter time period and, and introduce beginners to the game, there's a lot of reasons to do it. Um, they're not, they don't tend to be very financially feasible projects though, unfortunately. Um, and we tried to accommodate some of the goals of that within the structure of an 18-hole championship course, so we've got a, a six-hole loop, if you will, right in this area that returns to the clubhouse, and of course, the nine, the returning nines was important, which is why the clubhouse is, is where it is as well. So we're trying to do all we can to accomplish those types of goals within the same structure of an 18-hole championship course.
I would, I would point out that the first, the first designs we actually did had, had one in 18, uh, up in the top part of the project, and we worked very hard at, at trying to put it there. And we could never, because of the, the, the width between the, the bird building and the, and the levee, there just isn't room to get more holes going through there. And we finally came to the conclusion that there was no way that we could have a returning nine course and have the clubhouse up, up there. It's just a, it's just a, it's a fact of life on this site that made it very difficult.
And I will cite unofficially for the, for the, uh, for the record and for the developer's sake, if, if there was ever a piece of property in Palm Springs that could be considered a viable location for, um, increased height, I'm being as general as I can, it would be this one. From the standpoint that you've got a wash that separates you from anything to the east, and you've got an airport from the west, it would, it would not interfere with any known context that I think would find offense with it. And I think it may in fact afford, uh, the developer opportunities that are unherald and may in fact be, give you a different drive and a different motivation towards certain development. But, uh, I would, I would give you that as a, as a very cautious and a very sensitive sort of, of, uh, opportunity. But this property, again, from my standpoint, if, if it is not something that's extraordinary, I think we missed the vote. If it's just filling in, I, I mean, we can do it, but it's, it's a shame it wasn't more. Because we will never get a property this size, ever, in Palm Springs, ever, anywhere. It doesn't exist. How many acres is this, Doug?
About 450.
Unheard of, absolutely unheard of. So, I, I just caution you, although I appreciate the effort you've got in it so far, with 450 acres on the flat with unobstructed views, almost in a panoramic sense, and what will be eventually a fully landscaped median strip with immediate access to an interchange, um, I, I think there's greater opportunities here than what we've seen so far. Requires a lot of out-of-the-box work, but it's an amazing site. It's never, ever been looked at for its full potential.
You know, one of, one of the problems that, that, be, because we've looked at the height issue and realistically what's going to happen is, is the market's going to drive what, what really works here. And you start looking at, at higher densities, which, which in theory, height, height means, and you're, you're pioneering in an area that, that I'm not sure the market today you could ever justify. And, uh, if you start building six, seven-story condominium buildings, uh, boy, it'd sure be nice, but, you know, when, when's the market realistically going to be here for that? So you, you kind of, what maybe we'd like to do, and, and I, I'm not sure that if, that if you did that today, that, that you'd have a project that you could sell in, sell much in. And that's a, uh, we've tried to push the height beyond what we think the market is today, and I think we're doing that. And, uh, nothing would make us happier to have that as a, certainly a more accepted, uh, uh, market, I guess you'd say. So, I mean, we would love to push that, and we would love to have, uh, bigger buildings, maybe with more open space in between, but, uh, I mean, that's not really what's, certainly we're, we're, we're going farther than probably anybody's gone in the desert. I think the only one that I think of is what's the project down in Palm Desert or wherever, it's the six, seven-story Three Towers, Desert Island? And, I mean, those, one of the few that have really done that, and it's surrounded by 18 holes of golf and three buildings. Uh, and I'm, you know, it's just a, it's a, conceptually to do much more residentially than you're, than you're doing is very tough, given the, given the market that's, that's certainly been here.
I'll give you three closing points. One, you're still stuck inside the residential bag, I'm out of the bag, I'm in the hospitality bag. Two, you leveled off too quickly at six stories. Last concern I've got on the issue of city services, and I say it every time this project shows up, you ready? Fire station. Okay? I know there's a, there's negotiations that have to be made between developers and fire department, whether this is Station Six or relocation agreement with Five, or whatever it is, but it has always been an inherent part of the, of the development on this thing. So I'm not sure how it's going to be handled, but I want to make sure that the fire department gets its, its seat at the table.
We, we've met with the fire department, we've, uh, we're prepared to give them a site. Uh, I can't say they're overly enthusiastic about having their site, or their, their firehouse on the site. I think they have some places they'd rather, rather have it, and we're prepared to cooperate in any way we can to make that happen.
That's all I can ask for, as long as you guys are still dialoguing, we're okay. And when you guys stop talking, I guess we'll get, we'll get the word of it.
And I'm sure you'll come tell us.
Uh, we'll find out one way or the other, I'm sure. Well, anyway, gentlemen, I appreciate it, and I, extraordinary golf, I'm telling you. I've been walking myself through that golf course since you guys started, I probably missed half the presentation. I know I didn't hear any of his comments because I was walking the golf course, but, um, great golf course. And I love the dual, I love the dual fairway concept. I mean, that's not, not, not used often enough, unfortunately. Especially for guys that slice and shank a little bit, so it's a little break, we can find-
You should be like Doug, Doug took his dog out and, and ran the golf course the other day.
This one?
Yeah, they've got it staked out so you can actually run it, and if you take a look at number one and, and look at the T, you're looking right into the Takwitz Witch.
Wow.
So we're suggesting maybe some golf hole names.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, they lined it up right into Takwitz Canyon. So early morning tee-off, you're going to look at a beautiful mountain and right into the canyon.
What's the property just north of Desert Sun Zone, Doug?
M1P.
What's the height level on that?
Height limit could go up into the high-rise category, um, but typically in the 30, 45.
Yeah. Okay. Other comments, questions? Gentlemen, thank you for sharing so much of your time and putting your effort forward. Anything else?
Thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's, uh, burn right into our next item. I guess we'll call the EDC forward and we'll get our presentation on the budget task force concepts.
I would like to introduce John Stiles, Chairman of the EDC. And when we had last spoken, uh, the EDC had suggested that they would like to assist us in our, our budget process by formulating a task force. The council had responded by, one, asking the EDC to come forth with a proposal. They have done so, and at this time, we would like to pass out a, a brief letter that we'd received from the EDC. Actually, we have it coming from this-
You got it both ways?
Both ways.
Are they the same, are they the same letter?
The same letter. Mr. Stiles is, uh, here to explain, uh, what is in his proposal, and actually, at this time, I'll just turn it over to John and let, uh, him give the, the details. John, floor is yours, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Um, I think the letter's fairly straightforward, given, um, the budget considerations that the council is, is facing. Uh, one of the things that, that in the EDC that we've talked about, every time we hear about budget problems, we hear cut please, cut fire, quit water in the parks, and, and those must not be the only alternatives that are there. What, what we would propose to do is, is to form, um, a task force, 10, maybe 12 people who are at least familiar with budgets, so that we're not bringing a cut slash burn mentality to thing, people who can responsibly react to, uh, to budgets and the process and how things work. At least 50% of those people would be, uh, members of the EDC. I think we would like to reserve the right to appoint the members to that task force, but we're open to suggestions and, and the city manager and I have talked about a couple of people already that, that, from outside the membership.
John, just for clarification, uh, on, on this letter, the EDC would be appointing all the members, however, 50% would be EDC members-
Membership.
And membership.
From the membership.
The others, you would be open to suggestions from the city council.
Members of the community, because I think, I think-
Okay, thank you.
We also need a broad-based input on, on the situation, and so, um, I think it's better to open it up and get input, very similar to what we're doing on the development task force. We've got a lot of community participation there, so we'd want to repeat that kind of a process, and I think it works better that way. And the idea is to come back to the council with, with a broad list of, of suggestions, um, without, you know, just saying, you know, basically here it is, these are dollars, this is how it impacts your budget, um, and then we put it on the table and let you look at it and we leave, because then you've got the, you've still got the issues to deal with, but hopefully that, that's an assist to you to, to come to some decision-making things. And obviously, if there are members of the council that would like to join that, you're certainly welcome to come and participate.
Thank you, John. Council? Comments, thoughts?
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hodges.
Well, definitely, I, we need a task force. We need to be looking at this budget situation and see what we're going to do with it. No offense, John, but I don't want the EDC appointing all the, the people to this. This is our, should be our budget task force, the city of Palm Springs, not the EDC's.
We are all citizens.
Yes, that's very true. But I think we're the ones that are the guiding lights here that need to be appointing those people. There are people, and I'm sure that you would, your organization would never put on there, which I think maybe could be very good.
You know, I resent that.
And likewise, the opposite.
I think we are open, we are open to membership, we are open to the community to participate, we are not selective, and I'm not-
Then, then you should have no problem with us, you, you appoint half of it and we, and we appoint half.
Bring, bring the suggestions and let's work it out together.
So I don't have any problem with that. You, you have five of the members and we have five of the members, or six or six.
However it works.
But I do think that we have to have a little bit of control over it, otherwise I don't consider it to be our task force, I consider it to be your task force.
I consider it to be a community task force working for the benefit of the city, and we'd like to work out so that we aren't talking about cutting off the sprinkling of parks and closing libraries.
I definitely think so too, that's what we're trying to get to, is that we don't get to that point. And we do need the input and we do need, need the ideas. So I'm not, we're, we're not fighting each other here, we're just simply talking about a different way of approaching how we can put the people on there.
Bring the names forward.
And then what happens? You decide that you're going to take these instead of these?
Well, I, I think we talk about that, I don't think that's a big issue in my mind.
I don't either, I, I want to suggest, we'll just throw some ideas out here, just to get this thing rolling. How does the council feel about the idea of having, um, each of us select two members, one from the EDC and one from the public? So you're getting a public member and an EDC member of your choice. And then a chairman is established, and it was my discussion, at least when I arose, brought this forward months ago in January, my suggestion was that Lloyd would be heir apparent, he was on the council, he is an accountant, he called for the last task force, he understands what the task is.
And he was on it.
He was on it, it wasn't like he had to try to figure out what to do-
Yes.
And he could be the 11th member, sort of breaking the deadlock on tie, but each of us pick two members. One from EDC and one from local. If you want to negotiate, I'll take two EDCs, you pick two locals, so that each of us gets two names to throw in the pot, and that forms 10, and, and if you will, by default, allow Lloyd to be chair. How's that sound? And concept? So you get, obviously, you know, people that you would not get from EDC, pick someone you want on there. You can pick the one you want. No questions, no interrogations, no interviews, who'd you want to put on there? And you, we each get one, and then you get five on the EDC, which the EDC is, for all practical purposes, uh, an important part of the economic development of Palm Springs and has done a lot of work, so. And we did instruct you to actually help us put this together, so I, I, I'm just offering that as a suggestion, and I, and I welcome any comments or criticism of the idea.
I think that's great, that's exactly what I was thinking.
Good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
I, I, I like it as a combined task force, I mean, it's, it's city council-appointed and EDC, and it's a, and it's a joint effort, which is kind of, and, and the way you outlined and the way you outlined it is acceptable to me. I do agree with what Dana's saying. I don't want it to be an EDC-alone task force. I want it to be a combined...
And there's no argument with that. There's no argument with that. We had never intended that it be solely EDC members.
Right. I think that works fine. And the method that the mayor outlined is acceptable to me as well, so...
Mr. Mayor, that's acceptable to me, too. I thought that's pretty much what I was saying.
Yeah, well, that's where I got the idea from, Dana. It was your idea.
So is it acceptable to Mr. Stiles?
Well, you know, to me, yeah, it's acceptable. I've also got an executive committee that I want to run it by, but since we sit here tonight, yes.
Your membership talks about no larger than 10 to 12. We're suggesting 11, kind of right down the middle on that one. And you'd get five members from EDC and five from the community. And Lloyd, who I think is just as neutral as anybody could be in this world, is fair and balanced in his thinking, could serve, I think, very well for the citizens and for the city as chair, if he'll take the position. I mean, it's really continued upon his acceptance of that offer. Common direction? Okay with EDC?
Is there concerns about this being a Brown Act body on the part of the council?
Well, explain what the obligations would be if we went through this formula.
If the council's appointing members to a group that is advisory to the city council, it's a Brown Act body, which means that you, the meetings are at regularly scheduled times, you post an agenda, and the public is invited to be there at the deliberations of the group.
That's no problem.
That's the way it should be.
Yeah, that's no problem.
That's what it should be.
That's what it should be. I just want to be sure, when you decide on the process, you know what process you're picking.
And John, you're okay from the EDC standpoint with that concept?
Oh, sure. I don't think you'd close the doors, eh?
He wouldn't close the doors, anyway.
Right, right.
So, Brown Act or not, I think it's an open meeting. So I don't see that's a problem.
Okay, is that direction?
Oh, it's easy.
John, good work, Dana. You guys together are just amazing how you can fight this thing.
It's amazing what we can do, John.
Could I ask you even further, would council want these meetings to be recorded and televised?
Oh, I think that would be wonderful, but that might be asking a little bit too much. I'm not sure.
Well, if they're here in regular-time meetings, it wouldn't be, I don't think it would be a problem.
I think it'd be great. Because this is an extremely important issue to everybody in this city. And I think the process, looking at the process and how it's, you know, looked at, I think, is key to what's going to be making, you know, the suggestions viable. I think it'd be wonderful.
We sit at this table pretty much the same we are tonight, and be the same activity you're doing right now.
I don't think that's a problem, either. I mean, that's...
Now, you'd probably need some staff to give you some briefing as to what the numbers are, presentations, things of that nature, and I guess you'd coordinate that through David's office, and you're asking that Troy be the liaison?
Well, actually, it would be myself, Troy, and Tom Canar.
Tom Canar.
And department heads on as-needed basis.
What do you call that, PDMP?
PRN.
PRN.
I'll get that down.
JRS, PRN.
P-R-N. Got it.
The next question is, the process, if council is going to do this appointment, would you want it agendized at the next meeting, or is this something that you would want to do this evening?
I don't think we can take action tonight. I think we give a direction tonight, and then we've got, do we have to formalize this at next week's meeting? Add it as a...
Why don't we all give you a name? Give you a name.
On both sides?
Do we need to agenda it?
Yeah, right, the five of us give the names to Dana.
The appointment of this group is not specifically listed, and I think you should put it on a separate agenda.
Okay.
So next week, we need, next week, we'll need action to establish the group, the composition of the group, and then the members that each of us bring to the table.
Now, do you want us to pick the EDC members also?
Yes.
If so, then I would need to know the list of those members.
Maybe a list of all the members.
You can put it in a packet for Friday.
Is that possible? By Friday, get a list of the membership of EDC?
Just the names, doesn't it?
Sure.
Make sure, give it to Mr. Ready, and then it'll be filtered down to us for our packets for the weekend, and we can...
Then we can give one of each.
And I would suggest, perhaps, because we might be all picking the same person from EDC, get a one, two, and three. Oh, if you're going to pick him, and you're going to pick her, then I'll take my, I'm just going to get your perp, okay?
Yeah.
So you'll all be ready for next Wednesday?
And next Wednesday, we're going to bring you two names. And please let Mr. Oden know of this, okay? Two names. If he isn't watching tonight, he can get a clear copy to take.
I'm sure he's glued to the set.
Yeah, okay. And would you let us know by Friday if Mayor Marinoff would actually accept the chairman's post in this? Because if he doesn't, then we've got to figure out who's the chair.
Well, is that my responsibility to talk to Lloyd, or now is it, because the city council is now...
Want me to call him? I'll call Lloyd? All right, all right.
Is it 10, counting?
No, Mr. Marinoff makes 11, okay? Each of us picks two. One is an EDC member, one's a member at large, okay? And then Lloyd, if he accepts the post, will act as chairman, and he will direct this body into some formal... And you're suggesting by this thing here, this could be a roughly four-week process or thereabouts? I'm sure it'll be ongoing.
If we ever get started.
Yeah, I would almost suggest that maybe you try to get the core of your work done in that sort of time, but I'd like you to join us as we go through the budget process, because things will still be hopping. The state will come in. We'll get some new triggers, some new... So you may have to give us some guidance as things become updated.
Yeah, well, I think the key to this now is to get started.
Okay.
I mean, this is, this letter was dated 26. We go back a month before that.
You blaming the post office?
No, I'm blaming the process here. Good try, but it didn't work. And by the time we get to next week and get started and get into this, we're going to be well into April.
You'll have action by next week. We'll have names, and we'll take action on Wednesday, and there'll be a body. And then if the chairman accepts his post, he can call the first meeting at his convenience. He's not dealing with April 15th anymore. I think he's well past it. Okay? Council, okay with that direction? Dana, John, thank you for your direction in getting this thing solved so quickly. John, thanks for sticking with us this long. We'll be in touch there. All right, item four is the study session docket.
Mr. Mayor, before we move on, although we are going to agendize the communications piece at Mr. Oden's request for future meeting, I would like to just pass out, this is just an outline of some communication ideas that staff and myself have put together. That's just for your reference, and we will incorporate that into our future communications discussion. That's for your reading in a future time. Thank you. We are ready to move on to our study session docket, and...
If I can, while you're on this thing, you're dropping off emails and redesigning the website. I was under the impression that we were not allowed to have photographs of the council on the website, so we took them off. And then all other cities seem to have it on, and now we can put them back on again. So I would like to request that the photographs of the council members get back on again, because I don't know how many calls I get from people saying, hey, what do you look like? Is that, I can't, just put a simple photograph. I don't want a photo gallery, per se, but a photograph of each of us, if you will, representing who we are, attached as we had in the earlier years. So if that's okay, I'd like to see that at least brought back to us. And then we can establish...
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
We're in the process of redesigning the city's entire website, and one of the things we are looking at is including the photos of council, as well as a brief bio and a direct email function that people can use to email you to you if they have any information they want to share. But we are in the process of doing that. We've had several meetings with key staff members, and we're hoping to have that new site ready for unveiling later. This fiscal year, probably around the May, into May, early July, early June, excuse me, timeframe.
Good, good.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mills.
Is it okay if I get to pick your picture?
No, you cannot pick my picture. I know which one you'd pick. It'd be a terrible one. I'm certain of it. And did you look at, I'm trying to go through this real quick while keeping on point, did you look at actually video streaming these meetings on a Channel 17 as a possibility?
Video streaming.
Video streaming? Actually, you can actually pick up this signal, as you're seeing on your TV set, on the web.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, it's one of the items that we are looking at doing through the website is being able to video stream these council meetings or the replays of the council meetings and other commission meetings directly on the website.
Lee Husfeldt pulled up a website about a week or so ago that, it was a city, what was that city called? Cupertino. If you get a chance to take a, nice place, incredible website. Actually, you could go on the website, and you'd scroll the dates of the council meetings, hit it. It would bring up the video on one side, and then on the other side of the screen, it would actually have the agendas piece on it. So you could read the staff's report, if you will, and watch the proceedings and what the intent of that item was. I mean, it was very well done. It showed major speeches, major presence. I mean, it was fully accessible, and it was, if you will, from a log standpoint, it was the 15th of September 2001, and you can go back and pull up that old meeting. So you didn't have to come down and buy a tape or see a tape. There was a video history, a log on it. So I thought, I was very impressed with that. I don't know what the implications are, nor the cost, but it was a very impressive piece of technology. All right, with that, we'll move on. Okay, four. Want to go to four? Want to go to break? No, no, wants to go. Okay, study session docket.
Thank you. Mr. Bootzloff is passing out the docket agenda. And again, this is the meeting where we have listed the items that we have coming up and with those that we would like priority on. On the left, obviously, is the calendar. On the right are those items. We have topics that you see, the scheduled topics with the dates. Those are our planned meetings. The ones below that, topics to be scheduled, are the ones that council had indicated are priorities that obviously are not scheduled yet. And the ones at the top, topics requiring immediate scheduling, are ones that need some immediate attention, however, are not planned yet. I would suggest that we're probably going to need a special study session for those ones at the top. For example, the visitor center and the skate park could easily be one special study session meeting. The visitor center, we are ready with three scenarios for council to take a look at, so we can get the architect to go on which scenario council likes. The skate park, on that particular issue, the bids have come in. They were finalized a couple of days ago, and that process has resulted in a cost, the bids have come in at a cost higher than what we anticipated. We're working on some solutions, but we're going to need some new direction from city council. And of course, the budget update. We were originally planning on doing that on the 26th, which is the next city council study session. However, I understand that Councilman Oden will not be present at that meeting. He has a prior commitment. And I didn't know if council wanted to potentially have that on a separate meeting, because that will be a very important meeting as well. And you may want to have that budget update before we talk about the skate park and some of these other issues, such as Fashion Plaza and the visitor center and the skate park and the Solid Waste franchise.
Okay.
Thank you.
Council, thoughts? Things you wanted to see on here you don't see, things you wanted to add, move up? I'll give you one that I got, and I mentioned it last time we discussed this. Clean Cities Conference is coming, and I've got a conference call scheduled tomorrow with all the players nationally about what we're doing to assist them with regards to lowering, reducing waving golf fees, are we going to assist them exchange boots, display spaces? I know staff's working on this. But I had requested to come back to council to find out what role in sponsorship we wanted as the host city of this national convention, and it's not on here. And I'm a little concerned that I'm going to have a conference call with these people, and I don't know what I can offer them. So I would ask that something be talked with your staff and something be brought back Wednesday that tells the council, this is what we can do. Are you okay with it? Here's the cost implications. Here's the benefits derived. This is a national convention that we actually went to bat to get. We got it. They're in the hotels. They rented a box, and now they're asking for things to enhance it, and it's not here. And I need to get an answer from council, otherwise tomorrow's meeting is just, my phone call is a lot of listening. I can't offer anything. So it's a question of whether we're going to waive or reduce golf fees. Are we going to sponsor booths in it? I know staff was talking about exchanging booths for some exhibit space, using meeting islands for display. I mean, all kinds of considerations have been talked about, but I don't have any direction. And I want to represent the council in whatever capacity I'm enabled to do so, but I have no direction. So it's got to get to the council immediately. I won't even say future. Next week, we've got to get something on the docket that the council can go, this is fine. I mean, we wanted this conference. We got it, and it's a major conference, and I'm a little disappointed. I don't know what's going on.
Would you just, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Could you clarify exactly? I apologize, but Clean Cities Conference?
Yeah. It's a major conference that we went to bat for two years ago.
And when is that conference?
I'm going to try to look it up for you. I think it's in, I think it's in May. Yeah, I think you're right, Dana.
And you're looking for, like, financial funding?
I'm looking at, I think, the 18th they arrive, and then it's the 19th, the 20th, which is Tuesday, and I think Wednesdays they're closing, and then their golf tournament. But I don't know what the golf tournament is. I don't know if they're paying full fare, reduced rate. Are we waiving it? Are we sponsoring it? There's a lot of leverage going on. If we offer them certain things, then they can get sponsors to pay certain things, and we can take that money and get booths for exhibits. I know that we do a lot of work in alternate fuel vehicles and otherwise. We wanted to share some of our spaces with some of our partners and do a massive Palm Springs display. But we can't move anything forward until council gives the nod on the whole package, because they can't be dealt with individually. Otherwise, it's just pay this, pay that, and we're trying to meld the package together. So staff's aware of it. I'll work with Mr. Ready tomorrow, get more details to him. But staff's got to get some direction back to us for golf, for rental spaces, for displays, for whatever else is available. I know we talked about it from a number of standpoints, but I need something by Wednesday. And I'll help coordinate whatever it is you need for agenda purposes for next week.
Okay, thank you.
But that's what I need. On the Rocktoberfest, I think we discussed melding Elvis Weekend. Has that been separated for a reason? Is Elvis not happening? What's the Elvis, wasn't it Rocktoberfest report and upcoming, and then the idea of whatever Elvis was?
Rocktoberfest is the bigger event that Linda Ford had asked to speak of. Elvis Weekend, it actually has changed. Elvis Weekend is basically a convention center event, and all she is requesting actually is, I think, to police security, which is within her budget. So actually, I don't believe, she doesn't need anything on Elvis. It's Rocktoberfest she's looking for sponsorship for. So that's something that she can talk about on the 26th. She could also talk about Elvis, if you would like her to do that. They've done the reports from last year's Rocktoberfest, as requested, that she'll be discussing about on that time.
I have a question on Rocktoberfest.
Please.
Why doesn't she just go through the regular process? Doesn't it go to Parks and Rec and go through the whole?
Sept, another one. It does, however, she has requested specifically, and this is...
But this is where we get in trouble, because now we take this out of turn, because it's coming up. And if she went through the process, just like all the others do, it will get to us eventually, anyway.
And she's asked specifically for council's approval for two reasons. One, for the funding, because SEPT can't, won't make the determination on funding.
Well, then I would suggest that not go on a study session. I would suggest that go on an agenda, because otherwise, we're going to go through this conversation all over again for another agenda. So if that's what she's looking for, she's looking for funding. Why isn't it in her budget, first of all? Since we had one last year. But more importantly, have it on an agenda. If we're going to take an action on it, we can take an action, and it doesn't have to come back to us again.
Troy?
I might just add, Councilwoman Hodges, that the mayor had requested that the last time we discussed the weekend with Elvis, that he would like to have a report on last year's Rocktoberfest. So we felt that it was appropriate, at a study session level, to have that report, or debrief, so to speak, on Rocktoberfest. And then she's going to make her case for why the city should support this year's Rocktoberfest. And she's looking not only for the financial commitment, as the city manager had mentioned, but she wants to start the process of soliciting sponsors. So she needs to get ahead of the game by getting our support now, so that she can move forward with the solicitation of sponsors for the upcoming event.
That's Mother's Day. I guess I just don't understand why that doesn't go through the process. I'm sorry.
So the visitor's center needs to have a separate date? That's what you're saying?
The visitor's center and the skate park need some immediate attention.
Skate park, each? Skate park each?
But I, we could do it on the 26th.
Well, that's when, so are we going to postpone the budget?
No, the budget needs to have some immediate discussion as well. However, Mr. Oden will not be here on the 26th. Now, we could go with the budget on the 26th.
So now you're talking about, you said that the visitor's center and the skate park could each have a study session of their own. So now you're suggesting that we do the visitor's center, the skate park, and the budget on the 26th?
No, I think all three of those are too much for one meeting.
Good.
I would suggest that we have a special meeting for the visitor's center and the skate park.
Okay.
And we also, though, need to have a meeting on the budget. I had originally wanted to have the budget on the 26th. The budget and Fashion Plaza. However, Mr. Oden will not be here on the 26th. And again, it's council's pleasure if you would want to have the budget on another day or go ahead on the 26th.
I think the budget's got to stay on schedule. That's my concern. And I know that whenever I miss a meeting, I always say to the council, do the business that has to be done. I'm sorry I can't make it. Don't stop on my behalf. I mean, I'll write my concerns, and I'll give them to Mr. Ready, or I'll give you a copy before I leave. But this process is laid out for six months, and we've all got to, if you bump it, it changes everybody. It's an impact that I don't think I want to deal with. This is the tough enough process as it is. I think we just stay tried and true to the budget.
Mr. Mayor, I agree with you, and I too, obviously, have been missing some of these. When it's my topic that's on the agenda, yes, I would expect you to maybe postpone it. But something like this, I think, should go forward.
I concur. As tonight, we pulled off communication.
Because we've got business to do.
Because it was Mr. Oden's call.
It was his call.
So we pulled it off. But the other business went on.
Right. So I think we do have to go on.
Yeah.
So you also have down here on the schedule, the Desert Fashion Plaza and the Rocktoberfest on the 26th. Now, they're budget-related.
Correct. But what I'm hearing is that Rocktoberfest and Elvis does not need to come here. We will deal with that in a separate, in a different forum. That's fine. But Desert Fashion Plaza and budget would then be on the 26th. And the Desert Fashion Plaza is the streetscape that Mr. Westman would like to introduce to city council and request some assistance.
Is that the one we were told what to do today in the paper, or weren't told what to do? I'm not sure what that was. Okay, just making sure. Because I hadn't seen it yet, so I'm wondering what we were... We looked at something about a year ago, but I don't know where it's at right now. Okay. But we'll give it our best consideration. Topics to be scheduled at order of significance, third packet down, council, if I may, the bottom half. It says multi-species habitat conservation program and the BLM trail program. I think it's only fair that those two issues, which are being actively discussed, negotiated, analyzed from the subcommittee standpoint. There was, as you saw in the paper, fairly interesting meetings with the Department of Interior this past weekend. I think it's imperative that you get a briefing back as to what is exactly going on. Major impacts are being looked at at C-VAC level, dealing with the six interchanges and that mitigation issue. I mean, the whole thing is coming to this massive head. There are a lot of time restrictions. There's a lot of qualifiers. You know, the threat, if you're in the plan, you're out of the plan, you're blacked out, you're blacked in, you're circled, whatever. I think you've got to be briefed pretty quickly on that. So I, and that would take, that's a pretty extensive meeting. It's a lot of issues you have to be aware of. So I would ask that that be brought forward so that at least the work that we're doing on behalf of the council, we can tell you what we're at, and you can give us back direction.
Want to say the ninth for that? April 9th? No?
Mr. Mayor, the clerk has informed me that April 9th is a cabinet meeting. Now, I thought that we had scheduled that not on a Wednesday.
Oh, yeah, I have it down as a cabinet meeting.
You know, we've got so much work to do. Is there any possibility we could forego that for this quarter?
That would be helpful, because the Palm Springs disposal, we have that set for the 9th. And that is a, is a very, going to be a very, that's going to be an important meeting. The consultant is set for that evening, as is Palm Springs disposal.
For April 9th?
April 9th.
Well, if we're going to have them April 9th, then we can't have a cabinet meeting anyway.
Because you forgot.
But we'd have to reschedule Palm Springs disposal.
I think if it's at all possible, if we could miss this quarter of the cabinet meeting, I think...
Or you can move it off date. You can move it off the Wednesday. Pick a Tuesday. We did it last time, didn't we? We moved it off date. In fact, based on the congestion of our calendar, it may be advisable to move the council cabinet in a standard fashion off calendar and let it be a standing Thursday, as opposed to always discussing moving it and dealing with everybody's schedules. Just make it the Thursday that follows this Tuesday, whatever that...
Okay. Then I'll make inquiry with the tribal council to have a different date this quarter.
And again, let us know what the next council, the tribal council meeting is with us, too. May 22nd? May 22nd is the joint meeting?
What are we talking about here?
I'm sorry, it's the council cabinet, not the tribal meeting. I apologize.
Is tribal May 22nd?
I have the 15th.
Wait a minute. What's on where? Who's on first?
May 15th.
Joint Aguacaliente Tribal Council and City Council meeting is scheduled for May 15, 6 o'clock, Spa Hotel.
Right.
Do I have concurrence of the members?
Yes.
Dana, you probably didn't get that, because you weren't there. But that's, May 15, 6 o'clock, Spa Hotel, they host this meeting.
Yes.
That's our joint meeting with the tribal council. And then discussions on the, on the council's cabinet meeting, the suggestion is take it off of the 9th and select a different date.
Correct.
And I couldn't do the 10th. We've got, we've got plans.
What about the Tuesday before? Is that... Oh, Ron's got a problem with Tuesdays. Yes, he does.
Okay.
I don't know if it's every Tuesday.
Well, we've got time, I think, to establish the council cabinet date, working with Mr. Oden's calendar, but I think we've just got to move it off the Wednesday.
I don't know if he has every Tuesday, but I, maybe...
It might be helpful if you have standing meetings to get a copy of your standing meeting schedule to staff, so they can at least do a master standing meeting council cabinet, your council's schedule. I mean, pull it up off, I'm on screen, you can pop it, but I mean, we'll do whatever you want to help you figure that out, get a master figured out for committee meetings, C-VACs, whatever it all is. So we haven't even got to wonder what's going on. Okay. Leaf blowers, AQMD's got something coming up on that. I asked Roy Wilson to get some information to you guys to bring to us. AQMD was dealing with leaf blowers at a different level. They're trying to deal with some modifications to it. So I suggest you find out what AQMD is doing, Air Quality Management District.
You know, I asked for that, I don't know, a year and a half, two years ago, so it's obviously low priority.
Well, it's either that or the visitor's center. What do you want to do?
I'll pick the visitor's center.
Doug, you want to give us a little insight on multi-species habitat and trail, based on when you can...
No, 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 no. That's a meeting in itself, that whole thing.
Well, I mean, when do you think you'd be ready to give us a briefing on that? Is that weeks out, months out? When do you want to do that?
I think we could give the council a briefing virtually anytime.
Okay.
We may have better news later, but we probably need to give the council a briefing.
Okay. Mr. Mayor? Mr. Mills. Thank you, Doug.
There's a, there's a couple items that I'd like, that I think we need to put on for the topics to be scheduled. One is, we will be having a report from the task force on business friendly, for lack of a better term to call it. For the 23rd.
It's scheduled on 23rd of April. You see it under topics, schedule.
Development Task Force.
That's what it is?
So that's the business friendly guy?
Yes, I was at the request of the chairman, Mr. McCullough.
Okay. I didn't, I didn't know what we were calling it. So, and then the other item is, I think should be on for topics to be scheduled and not in the too distant future. And maybe perhaps that evening is the evening for it, to talk about design review, the process.
Combine them.
Because it really does, it's part of that task force.
Well, the question, we would, we would talk about it as part of that, that evening, Councilman Mills. The question is, is it appropriate then, or did you say you wanted it before the 23rd?
Well, I would certainly like to have, I would like to have discussions on, on how to formulate it resolved with, with, with staff, so the recommendations coming from staff for that meeting, no later than that meeting. I mean, I'd like to have it done for, in the morning, but, but it, but it is something that, that needs to get taken care of soon, as quick as possible. And I, and I don't, I think it would be ideal to have it on at the same time, unless there's, you see other things happening on that date that's not going to work.
No, we envisioned it to be on that same day, because it's going to be part of the recommendations. So just to recap this, then, on our next meeting, the 26th, would be the Fashion Plaza streetscape plan and the budget update. But before then, if we could pick a date for next week, for the visitor's center conceptual plan and the skate park update. That's the missing link at the moment. In essence, I'm asking if we could have a special study session for those two items.
Next week.
Either next week or the following week.
Off calendar?
Off calendar.
Thursday, the 20th?
I didn't bring my calendar, but yeah, I'm sure that's probably fine.
Chaney?
It's fine.
Chris, Thursday, 20th, evening?
If there's not a closed session prior.
Okay.
Okay. All right. And then on...
And what do you want to bring on that date, sir? That would be the 20th?
It would be the visitor's center and the skate park.
Could we start it earlier?
Well, that's part of, I think Chris is concerned by that.
Actually, I have a 6:00 meeting that night that I've moved twice, and I'm kind of stuck. And, you know, it's a short meeting, and I could be back here probably a little bit after 7:00, but it's out of town, so...
All right. Well, then, as opposed to the 20th, you want to go two days prior, you want to go to the 18th? That's a Tuesday again, that becomes Mr. Oden's concern.
He's kind of, it's Riverside County.
Right.
But it's, I think it's once a month. I don't think it's every week. I just don't know which day it is.
Why don't you call us?
You're out of town. What time can you get back in? 7:10, 7:15?
I can be back in just a few minutes after 7:00. That's, that's not a problem. So I mean, I can be late. That's okay.
Okay. Well, then, visitor's center and skateboard park, 7:00, 20th?
26th, then, is budget and Fashion Plaza. On the 9th is the solid waste franchise and update on the city golf course. The 23rd, we have the development task force and the rental housing inspection program. That was requested by Mr. Oden. Now, the question is, now, I presume that if those two things, those two things in and of themselves would be enough for the agenda. Now, we have the leaf blowers moving to the next meeting. The leaf blowers, I don't know, I don't want to add too many more things to the agenda on those previous two meetings, unless you'd want to add a third, a third thing, like, we could do the leaf blowers.
I'm not worried about the leaf blowers, I'm telling you. It's...
Why don't we just take it off the list?
Well, we would get into it, just, we'd get into May. We could schedule that for one of the first meeting in May.
Or add palm tree trimming.
So if council's okay with that, then, then we have our schedule through the end of April.
I forgot what I was going to ask you about the leaf blowers.
And, and what we will do is, as we get through, close to the end of April, we will come back, and those things to be scheduled, then we will figure out May and June schedules from what's left to be scheduled here. Now, I would just add a caveat at the very bottom, topic scheduled as required, convention center phase two. We understand that in, as we move through, the mid, mid-April is when things will start cooking again on the convention center. The information that you had requested, so you will have information to make the next level of decisions, will be ready. So we may have to request a special study session then. And the same on the SMG contract renewal. We're in the process of putting together the next round of meetings, and we will come back to you with information at that time when we need decisions.
Yeah. SMG is in the, in the subcommittee stages, and we're still analyzing the current construction of the current contracts and what's wrong with it, and then we're getting input from the hoteliers. So we're only in that sort of investigative stage. I don't think we're ready to come back to you anytime soon. I think you can hold that off. I don't know what the schedule is on their expiration date, but we're not moving at any kind of lightning pace that I'm aware of. We had one meeting, and it was a lot of complaining, more than it was direction. So I think Mr. Oden and I want to try to figure out, okay, let's look at what we got, and then get some more input, and then give some idea how to reconstruct this thing differently. So we're not prepared, I think, right away. Okay. On the visitor's center conceptual plan, who's going to carry that? Who's bringing that forward?
That's John Raymond.
Is that going to discuss partners in the facility, the design program? What are you bringing to us? Would you come up and give us an explanation, just so I understand why we're going to meet? If it's just, here's the plan, and this is it. What I'm expecting versus what you're presenting, I want to make sure we're on the same, same page. Thank you, John.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. One of the things that needs to happen before we can go forward and start designing it is that you, you as a council, have to decide what it is that you want them to do. Do you want more space in another building? Do you want, you know, to live within the existing 2,300 square feet? And so what they've been doing is, we've had several meetings, probably a half-dozen, eight, nine, 10 meetings, including some of the partners.
With the architects?
Yeah. We're talking about the architects, with tourism, with the tribe, and with some of the other partners or at least interested parties that want to be in there. And they're trying to fit all the pieces together and trying to figure out how everything's going to fit and where things are going to go. So one of the things that, well, the primary thing that's going to be coming to you is a series of options, going from less expensive to, you know, more expensive. And then you'll have to say, and they're, and they're, they're programming options. There's not necessarily going to be a lot of design, like this is the brick we're going to use, and that, you know, that sort of thing.
Programming discussions.
But programming discussion.
Okay. And some cost assumptions.
And some costs associated with that, so that you get to decide whether it's, you know, you want to spend, you know, that the budget is going to be, you know, relatively small.
A little bigger or a lot of big?
A little bigger, a little bigger, a little bigger.
Okay.
And that sort of thing, because then we need to be, if you, you recall, we, we did a, kind of a two-stage contract process. We have them on an hourly contract right now through the programming phase, and then the, the, the larger contract for the design and construction will be based in part on the cost of the project. So we can't finalize that contract yet until we know, you know, what the project budget's going to be and...
Allow me to add a little bit to your confusion. As we go through the SMG contracts, there are two of them, the convention center and the tourism. And there have been discussions as to each of those, how they're done now, and how would they change, and so on and so forth. In the tourism component, some of the hoteliers are wondering, what do they do now? Should they do it differently? Is it more marketing, more booking, more... And then with, once they describe what the functions of this entity are, then you can better shoehorn it into the building. And what I'm afraid of is we're just taking what exists in the current one and just putting it in there, when in fact, the SMG contract negotiations, based on hotel input, how it's working reservations, and so on, marketing, may change the way it operates and functions. I don't know if they're going to put the offices in some remote, you know, isolated offices, and this is just a front thing? Is there a store? I know there's discussions with other governmental entities that want to come there and have a presence, other attractions in town. I know you talked to the Aguacalientes. Historic Site Preservation Board this week had a discussion at their meeting about how do they get their information out? They want a little more presence there, whether it's maps or brochure.